It looks like it's pretty short.
Excuse me, 6:30? We're gonna go ahead and get our meeting started. Thanks everyone for coming out and being here tonight for our town council meeting for the month of June. It's great to see this good turnout. I thought with all the good weather that we've been having, that y'all might have done something else to do. So we chose to come and be here with us for our town council meeting. So our meeting is now called for order. We'll begin with our invocation. And as I saw earlier, ask Mark Walker if he would to lead us in first.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you tonight. Thank you for this time. Really thank you for the people who care about concern their town, their state, their country, to give back, to volunteer. We ask that the meeting certainly goes well and much be accomplished as we move forward. Thank you for life. Thank you, privileged it is to serve you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mark. Now if we could also again join together and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we'll have our time of introductions.
Valerie Johnson, Sam Clark.
Diana Lawton.
Mike Allen.
Dana Barnes.
Tim Sessions.
Let's zip the flowers.
Let me ship flowers.
Scott, look for your town manager.
Trina, we have finance officers.
We need them.
That was right. Great, thank you. And now, has anyone had the opportunity to look over the consent agenda? I imagine anyone has. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Oh, I have a question.
Okay, alright.
I have a question about Trina. I don't want to be called here tonight, but about the trail meeting. And it's, the committee had recommended a resolution on the traffic and parking congestion. So without a recommendation to us, the town council?
That's the first trails meeting that I was not present at.
Okay.
And I'm not sure. We don't have Paul here this evening?
No, Paul's not here.
I think Jane is here though.
It was the first time. It was to refer, what we meant for it to do was to go to Scott.
Okay.
There was a concern that came out in the meeting.
Okay.
And not, he didn't feel under her jurisdiction, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powell. Any other questions? Alright, anyone that can make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Barnes, second.
I'll say it.
Second by Ms. Lawton. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Announcements? Does anyone have anything in the way of announcements?
Couple of things. I'd like to remind everybody that June the 28th, that's Saturday, we're going to be having our fishing derby here in Union Park that morning. And that's for children from ages six to 12. And we're accepting 50 kids for that. And we also have that same day, that evening in the park at the amphitheater, we're having Music in the Park event. We're having a part-time party time band. If you've ever heard of those folks, they play a lot in there. And more detailed information about that, there's a flyer that looks like this on the back table back there. Encourage anybody to come out for that. They decided to write that on June the 28th. Also, one other announcement, we'll talk a little bit more about it later. But with the town's purchase of the Gordon property, we have inherited somewhere in the neighborhood of abandoned cats. And before this animal lover has to send them to the shelter, I would love to have some, if there's any interest or you know of any interest, please direct them to, direct them the town's way very quickly.
Carter, on that, would you please give us an overview of the Gordon property, of Dave, where it was stand?
Sure, sure. As you know, if you've been attending meetings or following this project, we were set to close on May 30th. That was delayed. Nothing on our end. It was an issue on the seller's end. And we finally got that resolved. And the loan is officially closed. And as of today, actually. And we're happy to have that part behind us. And as always, if you have any questions at all, give me a call directly and we'll talk.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? I know our development ordinance is still in process.
Yes, I've reviewed it. Now planner has reviewed it and we've met to go over it. We're working together to streamline. It's just a little bit o-.
O-.
...okay? And if they can not happen.
Very good.
We're trying to optimize these effects.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, if there's no other announcements, we'll enter time with public comments. And as always, if you'd like to have public comments, we just ask you to come up, please identify yourself and give your address. So you can take five minutes to talk real about anything that you'd like to talk about. I would encourage you also though, if you have input on the budget, we'll have another opportunity for you to speak to the budget a little bit later. So maybe if you want to save those comments for the budget time, that would be great. There's these slips of papers back in the back on the table there. If you'd like to fill one of those out and just pass it up to Ms. Allison, we'd be glad to call you up and give you five minutes. Okay? So we'll begin with Gail Dunham. Sorry for coming in.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear how this is going. I'm extremely annoyed and extremely disappointed today when I read an email from Mr. Wager to someone. I felt he was talking down on the person, to be very insulting. And this person had this handicap. And he does, he has good work to raise money. So that every person in this room, hopefully, if I'm sure this succeeds, people in this room won't get the same pain that he enjoys every day. But I don't think it's the manager's job to talk down to anyone in the town. And to talk to lots, to talk a lot about himself, I think the email was very poor taste. Someone questioned something about government. Then I don't think it's his job to try and start a fight. I was looking to see with the handicap access here, if someone could easily come. Obviously, some people are more vulnerable than others. I do think though, with Gordon building, it's going to be limited handicap. I think handicapped people will be able to get there because you probably go across the street if they decide that. But I thought, I think the town was wrong. It just wasn't your place.
I would invite you, I'm going to interrupt you.
No, I'm going to talk, this is my time.
Ma'am, I'm going to speak.
I'm going to talk about the finance committee.
I would like to invite you to read the email and describe how I was moved as a citizen.
It was about you and it...
Yes, without my qualifications.
Okay. You're talking, you don't realize you're talking down on someone. And I think it was in very, I think it was in very poor taste. The finance committee, I would suggest that, those members on the finance committee that have seen the town limits, maybe the committees, you've all said you want more volunteers. I said something on the gentleman's night, but I've never seen anything posted that, looking for volunteers for the committees. I haven't seen anything posted on that in a long time. So is it maybe we could, perhaps until July, do a posting that maybe keep the volunteers for these committees? That might be a step in the right direction. The budget presentation is hard to be done by June 1st. It wasn't the budget meeting. The budget meeting just represented a lot of procrastination, budgets. What you're talking about tonight, it was finally about, I guess, on June 6th. It was required by statute. I hope you all read the emails you may have received, but it was required by statute that they have to present it for June 1st. It was never presented to the public. And really wasn't presented to the council. It was here at Oxford, we were having some paperwork that night. We had people in the room working from two different versions, two different drafts. It really was not productive meeting. There's a whole lot more in these 30 pages that was never ever discussed. So I don't think that the budget was presented. And I think we should have more time. The other thing, now they decided on the budget, it's employee pay, none of us. And this is very cheap, but I think that to you, that I had received from Katrina a while ago. I requested this, Scott, Katrina nodded, yes. Whoever you get that, I think that should have been part of the budget. Of course, you didn't get it until June 6th, so there's no way, there's probably no time to ask for important details like this. I requested this in the past. I requested April 3rd, May 27th. We still don't have it. If you're just going to work a stamp with budget without the contract information, I think you should have had some more thought. The, I did notice, I was opposed to a contract that Scott entered into with Gordon property that forced the town to accept the liability and the destruction of the trailers. We would have been far better, if people would have been more professional, to have a contract where the town accepted the kind of the preliminary in clearance. At the time, Scott said, there's an email, I think he said taking down trailers is going to be like $50,000. Now we've got some $50,000 down on the line. I, you know, the cleanup on the side is much higher than it appeared to be. And I think the town should have liability. You know, the cats, they're beautiful cats. I think they might be effective in keeping mice out of the yard. Normally mice, you may have, may have mistakes just to make your journey. So I think people have to be careful going out of the property. I hope the house, I hope the town not planning to have a landlord. The house is truly huge, the White House, but there's some major problems. It needs a new roof, physical window, the back stairway is falling apart. Someone could be hurt going down that stairway. Again, there's liability issues. And I don't think the town should try and appeal landlords with property. And you had said you would not consider that being a landlord. I did notice, someone asked me, they said, what happened to the employee paying benefits of 10 years with the town? And it did go from $79,440,000. So it's a large increase, it's a lot of increase there.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Your time is up.
Last question?
No, thank you, Ms. Dunham.
Could you give us a square footage of Gordon building? We have, we have it to you, have any?
Approximately 3360.
Both, you mean Tom?
I'll do one.
Okay, Shirley Jennings.
I'd just like to remind everybody that is present tonight that we here, so I'm having a congressional race. And I'm here to support a Bill Burger Jr. Because, especially because I attended the civitas program recently. And one of the speakers pointed out so beautifully the importance of immigration and amnesty. And how that affects our system here. And we've been reading about that every day and every day. And all the plates and all the president comments for it getting really come up. And I believe recently I was at a forum where the positions of both candidates that are up for the July 25th run were put forth. And I believe that Bill Burger Jr., with his experience as law enforcement, is we protect this and be able to understand the importance and how this affects law enforcement. Law enforcement is huge in this issue and the safety of everybody in this country is going to affect us. I think it will, if it continues the way it is, we won't, we won't be talking about Republicans and Democrats, we'll have a one system, basically. And so I just wanted to put forth that if you're interested in it, I believe this Saturday, at the office in Greensburg for Bill Burger Jr., there should be a gathering of people there. And if you should check on the website for that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings, for coming in and for sharing. One thing, that runoff is on July 15th.
Is that what I said?
Yes, July 15th.
That's what I said.
Yeah, July 15th. But thank you very much. Kathleen Flanagan.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I give announcements. I have a booth at Goldie's Antiques and have been with them for over two and a half years. And we're going to start a story hour for the community. There'll be three dates this summer, June 24th, July 15th, and August 5th, 10:15 to 11:00 a.m. Ages four to nine, we will have more of us, teachers or teachers assistants. It's not a drop off, but we will have guest readers. And I'd like to take this opportunity to ask the mayor to maybe have guest reader for story time.
Absolutely.
I think you may have some practice at it.
Read? I don't know how to read.
So we were thinking very much to keep it, I'll get with you on the dates.
True.
And also I'd like to know if it would be okay to make copies of the flyer that we have in the back. We have numerous customers flying through and a big community yard sale this weekend. That we could be giving out flyers for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, is that okay?
Absolutely. We'd be glad to print them at the office and bring them to you.
Oh, that would be wonderful. We'll do them at the counter as they're checking out and out front, we'll post it.
Just speak with Valerie there, Sam Clark afterwards, and tell her how many we need. We'll help you out.
Okay, that would be great. And story here, this is to you regarding the cats. And they can, animal rescue of puppies, also takes kittens and cats. And Sharon Gray is the chair. She would be glad to help you and that lady with the situation. And her phone number is 689-6862. And yes, it is July 15th, the runoff. And I'd like to encourage everyone in this room to get out and vote. Get your neighbors, family, and friends, because that is very important. Be a part of the community is not just here. Thank you very much. Good time.
Thank you very much. Duane Crawford.
Hello. I see where there's people going out for conditions, they're starting to inspire. I thought I'd clock them by it today. Uh, recently, bottom circle board, this is that, you asked question, I don't even hear it. I don't, you're getting asked, I'm pretty concerned, I don't care being raised. Designated skills, local citizen, grew up here with the school, here, chosen to live my life here. Apologetic, caring, paid my bills, have no ambition to promote myself. My interests were any personal agendas or the agenda of any group organization, special interests. An apologetic conservative for personal free self-expression. It's just not right to go deep into that.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Mark Walker.
With your permission, I have to...
Yeah, that's the question.
Thanks for letting me have the opportunity to come out tonight. I want to say thanks for your service at what I said Founder's Day the other day. And I appreciate you being one of the service. I remember at age 19, I heard Chuck Swinell say one time, no true leaders without criticism. So anytime you're out there making decisions, it's going to be something that you shy to die. I came into the triad in that county one. I had about $600 in my pocket, I drove into town because I had met a girl in college who was from this area. That didn't last very long, but I figured I was here now, better stay. So I remember walking into a automobile dealership and talking about Vic Flow. And he says, what are you doing here? I said, I'm here to apply for a job. He said, have you ever sold anything before? I said, no. But I'll be your top salesman in three months or I'll quit. He said, what you got to do? That's my best John Wayne bluff I had. So we worked ourselves there within eight, nine months. We had some management opportunities and served in management for the next five years. And some of the different franchises that the municipal had. At age 27, I transitioned out of that, went back to school for three years and finished a degree in biblical studies and became Dr. Gary Shatner, Mark Horst, at Calvary Baptist Church. Along the way there, I met my wife. She's the little hero of the family. She flies for Baptist Hospital, the air care, the trauma helicopter there. And we, anytime we share a story, she always, always wins. You don't, you don't ever want to meet her while she's working, you're having a bad day. That's the deal. But we've been blessed. Two, three years ago, I began to be conservative for our country was located and where it was headed. Two really motivating reasons that began to propel me and began to get involved with the Greensboro City Council and working with some of the candidates there. In fact, I attended literally every Greensboro City Council in 2012. And just began to get more and more concerned about freedoms and liberties for my children. I wanted them to have the same liberties that their fathers and grandfathers had. But the other aspect of it, I believe there was a way to share our conservative principles without the vitriol and without the negativity and without the name-calling. I think of Ronald Reagan, never remember him jumping up on a table spitting vitriol at the opponent. He led with principle and passion. And I believe there's a way that we can still do that. Three things I'm very concerned with. One is tax reform. There's nearly 74,000 pages written down, tax code regulations. In 2012, 69% of all families should use the adoption credit. We're audited by the IRS compared to 1%. Not only is the IRS abusive, but it's also taxing as our corporate tax rate is 39%, highest in the world. Number two, entitlement reform. Over the last four years, I've taken large groups, 60 to 70 high school kids in the inner cities of Cleveland, New York, and Baltimore. What you've seen is devastating, little children running around unsympathize. We need entitlement reform to tell them that the true hope is in self-alliance. Number three, is we've got to stand up against amnesty. Contrary to what you hear and see after some time, on a very big, strong note, secure borders and ports, no illegal hip inter- share amnesty. And so if you hear that on the radio or something, you're certainly well to agree, to say what I share. Couple of quick things and I'll wrap it up. We are the only candidate not to take any special interest money. We've been blessed to raise over $300,000 and here's why. If you're taking tens of thousands of dollars of special interest money now, you have to ask, who's your pledge or promise to when you get to Washington DC? The question is, is it still possible that one of us can get there? Just on the backs of working, hardworking people that can make a difference. Number two, that message is resonating. We're the only candidate that has either sheriffs or law enforcement endorsements, which is, which is pretty amazing. But we're also the only candidate who's received any of the other former clients' endorsements as well. People that we know, people that we work with. I believe it's important, the message is crucial, but I also believe the approach is important. The old fashioned building relationships and getting things done, we've sort of lost that art in politics. It's to bring the vitriol, it's to bring the name-calling. And I still believe there's a way to get things done. As I close with this example, I remember Ronald Reagan, Gorbachev. And I remember Gorbachev, that picture of him putting his hand on Reagan's hat. And I asked, why did that happen? And I believe this is reason why, because Gorbachev saw his heart before he saw his politics. When we continue to genuinely care about people, I believe it makes a difference. I would love to have your support. We were blessed in Summerfield, we went all four of the precincts overwhelmingly. We hope we get a chance to do that again and we look forward to seeing you on July 15th. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Debbie Stafford.
Hi, Debbie Stafford, 79, 70, I'm a few ready. I may be slow to this time, so I'm a bit nervous. So I will try to look at you, but I agree with you. What I really want to hear is from you guys up there. I want to hear how you personally feel about the trail and the path that it's taking. Because Bill and I, and I don't feel I'm our neighbors, but I haven't heard how you feel, how the path is taking. I haven't heard a word from any of you, except Ms. Flowers. She's voiced her concern on several occasions. She's given advice, she's told how she's failed. She's been at the Trails Committee meetings. The mayor has come to the briefing that Bill now went to. I'm sorry. The rest, as you point, we've come here and we've spoken. I guess it's your job to just sit there and not say anything. But I haven't seen any comments in the Northwest Observer or from the Summerfield news that's online. I'd like to know your opinions about the path that it's taking. How do you feel? Do you like the path that it's taken? Do you have other ideas? Do you agree with the intimate domain that's been talked about? And it has been talked about. Mr. Pete, the member, Sal Hill today, he was basically intimidated. That's why he gave the Trails Committee the approval to go through his land. He's an elderly man. He was intimidated. And he was told, we'll be forced into the intimate domain. So the ones that have told us this was not discussed, we were lied to. Because this gentleman is not going to rely to us. And so he was told this, so don't tell us again that this has not been discussed. It has been. It is been discussed behind closed doors, but it's out there. I want to know how you feel. Do you agree this what's going to happen to Bill and I? And honestly, I think it's out there. We went to the Trails Committee meeting two weeks ago. They spent the two hours discussing parking issues, different query ways to park. There was no discussion about different paths. I know it's been discussed in the past. I appreciate y'all telling them to step back, take a look back. But I want to know how you feel. Do an interview with the Northwest Observer, one-on-one. Be honest. Put how you feel out there. We deserve that. Bill and I deserve that. That land has been his family since 1948. We've talked about building a house on the hill over there overlooking the pond. We don't feel like we can do that. We're not going to spend, like, to build a house over there. The terrorists over there, come kick us in the back, sit out there on our porch and watch strangers walk through our back door. And you stand here and look at us in the face and say, we're not going to do that. We're not going to enforce intimate domain. When it's already been told before to Pete and he gave in. And that's why he gave in. He told Bill, we're too old to fight. We are not too old to fight. I know the Trails Committee or whoever is going to hire, what I call the ads on, because I don't know the title they're going to give me, someone to come and talk to property owners, which one of the Trails Committee members is now calling people like Bill and I, the bottom necks, to come and talk to the landowners, which I think is a good idea for, I hope, which will be different ways to go around. But there's no need to send him or her to talk to us, because that's not an option. But that's another expense to the town. You're going to hire somebody to come follow people that's getting into the land. Some of the Trails Committee members, they're not from Summerfield, so they don't care who or whose land they take. I knew Summerfield because I married into the family. Bill was born there. I know how it feels. They don't care whose land they take. I know some of y'all lived here on the way to. But I'm deeply concerned. I want to know how you feel. And sitting there looking like you look, I can't reach you. I don't know you. But I think we deserve to know deep down. I want to know your heart. Just be honest with me. I can take it. I'm a grown woman. I've been through a lot. If you say, yes, this is how I'm going to go, I'm going to bite your tooth and nail. I'm ready for the fight. But I least deserve your honesty. If you tell me, we're not going to look for another route, fine. And I told you before, when you give my son and daughter, my son and daughter a lot across the street, directly across the street, they can't move forward either. Okay? So please, just consider doing an interview. Let us know how you feel.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thanks for sharing your comments and your feelings. And we really do appreciate that. And, you know, I have taken the opportunity to come over and visit Mr. Stafford and not even really to discuss the trails or anything, just to get to know him. And he has shared with me your own feelings. And we've certainly heard from the other members of your neighborhood. And it has impacted what our plan is and what we hope to do.
Thank you.
So I can't, I can't tell you that much. And I can also tell you that, you know, I have been on, I have been the mayor since December the 10th. And every meeting that I have been in, in this room back here, it has never been discussed that we would do that or consider doing that. It's never been discussed. So I can't tell you that. And that's me being truthful and honest with you, because that's what you deserve.
Thank you.
Okay? Anyone else want to speak to that?
I want to know if Mr. Pete was told that... I want to know if, if Mr. Pieten was told that.
If, if he was, it wasn't by any representative of the town that I'm aware of. I would like to know the source of that. And we have, I'm sorry.
We're certainly going to leave with him and explain to him that, that is not the case and try to find out. You know, try to help him.
I do know that the domain hasn't spoken over your meetings. It has not been by a town official. It was by someone, I believe, at the MCO. And I want you to know that I am not in favor of eminent domain. I hold my land very dearly, and I would not want someone to take my land. I'm just being perfectly honest with you. So I would treat you the exact same way.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
The only time that eminent domain was mentioned was when there was a question of what would we do, and somebody said, well, that would be an option.
No, they, yeah, they specifically asked the question, would eminent domain be an option?
And that's what they said. Others have used it, so.
And legally, it is an option.
Yes.
But we've never said it was an option that we would consider. From a legal perspective, it is an option.
It is an option.
From where we sit right now tonight, we've never discussed that.
I personally am against eminent domain and those kind of actions that are associated with that. I come from a farming background, and I like the idea. I appreciate your honesty and certainly do take it into consideration, take it very seriously.
I'm opposed to eminent domain, except in the case of possibly if there's a safety hazard of some kind. Other than that, people buy their property and they're entitled to it, entitled to do what they want to as long as it's in the zone, you know, according to laws and everything. And this is what I have, if anybody had asked me, I would have said it, but I have not felt at liberty from here to speak about it.
And so that's what this is, an effort to try to open up, give you an opportunity to hear from, I guess, every single person up here.
That's just not what Summerfield is about.
Your message has been heard, and it has impacted what we're thinking and where we're going, and trying to figure out a solution.
Before the trails became a thought, I would not be eminent domain. I have been living here since nineteen eighty-eight, and you could ask me then and I would say, no, I'm not for that, no matter, except like in the idea of a safety thing. I would think, and this is speaking out, speaking openly, had we not purchased the golden property so that we could take down that old building, we would have had to do something about the old building as big as possible. That's just a real far-out example that I could give you.
Thank you all very much.
Skip it. Thank you. And in response to Ms. Dunham's comments, Ms. Dunham, I read the same email today from our town manager, and I did not find it commensurate or talking down to him. I think he succinctly tried to answer his questions and respond to him. I didn't find it that, to be that at all. And also, our budget process, while I guess, I'm going to guess that every budget process is flawed at some degree, I can assure you that this one is better than the one last year. At least, that's the message that I've gotten from the folks that I've heard from. So we did better this year, and we hope to do better again next year. Nobody's perfect. I wish you were. Okay. Now, nobody besides Ms. Flowers, I'm sorry. Okay, so after public comments, we'll now have our, I'm sorry.
I didn't, Miss O'Day. Yes.
I didn't, uh.
On to the list.
Okay, sorry. Didn't link you up.
Okay, great. My name is Kelly O'Day, seventy thirteen Mustang Court, Summerfield. Um, this is my first time speaking. Really glad to be here, and to thank you all for your time and serving our community. I am here because I do want to speak on a positive note on the trails. I am, I'm feeling I moved here about three years ago. We love Summerfield. This guy, what our town manager brought up, it's one of the, was safe, one of the best kept secrets and one of the best places to live. So we, we actually, it took us two years before we could move here to be here. This is the first year my husband missed, we miss Founder's Day, usually called in tears. And we recognize the changes that are coming and are concerned about that. We also want to embrace the opportunities that all the changes are coming. G twenty widening, with the need for the trails to move forward and so forth. So what I wanted to come here and speak to you all about is there are a lot of trail users that are unable to come talk because of time constraints. One of the things I wanted to come up with so that we have something to base information on, are facts. In Summerfield, we have over ten thousand people and about twenty-five hundred families. And of those twenty-five hundred families, forty-two percent have children under eighteen. We have all seen and heard about the parking problems, you know, because people are using trails and so forth. Well, that to me shows the need, and that's a really good thing that can be a value add for our community. It's on how we look at it. Anytime you have change, there's growing, there's pain points, and there's problems. But working as a community is wonderful, as Summerfield is to live. I'm confident that people that we have on Trail Committee and you guys will make the right decision. You know, I want to know, I want to be here because, you know, my daughters know that I represent a large portion of the trail users as a woman and as a mother. It's a free way to exercise once you drop your child off at school, at preschool, or whatever the case may be. I walk the trails alone with my dogs. I ride my bike on the trails all year round. So that's a very important, um, a very important topic to me. So I just want to make sure that people don't mistake a lot of comments from folks sharing high viewpoint because of the other activities they have to do. People are traveling, and there's a lot of reasons. So also, too, if the trails weren't safe, I wouldn't be using them. Uh, let's see. One of the things that I want to add, too, is because G twenty is widening, we happen to live on the east side of G twenty, so it's very important to be able to have that tunnel come through. My daughter likes to, you know, we like to walk up, what's going on, you know? My husband, full disclosure, is on the Trail Committee, and I can assure you that he would want me to say, all considerations are done, eminent domain can never be a consideration. That has definitely been something respectful, thoughtful. So we are a community of trail users, landowners, and so forth. And I believe that people will, you know, they just want to be heard and feel, feel heard and feel respected. I think that will happen. I really confidently believe that the people that we have working together as a community, that will happen. And just to put it this way, I don't think anyone should vilify or wanting to preserve their security and privacy and totally respect and totally get that. At the same time, you know, if we have to do trails and it may encounter ones to go around, so be it. I would like to see the trails expanded as needed for the community, respecting landowners and security and privacy, but also because we have the need for that. And with the trails widening, we can get bikes off the road, we can get children's easier access to parks. We don't have to get entourage and then plug up the parking issue. So we can look at it as a problem, or we can look at it as like, you know, something we can address. Change, you don't know what's going to happen, so let's really address. So I think Summerfield can be part of, you know, connect with the joint communities because we have an opportunity to do so, and it's a positive action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Day. Sorry, I missed you there. I never saw your slip. Before we do our committee reports, I did want to recognize, it's great to have Jeff Burkhall and Julie Reed, our town planner and partner for recreation, a person here with us tonight. I don't know if y'all have something to do later on, but hey, we're glad to see you here. Thanks for coming. And now for our committee reports. We'll start with the finance.
The finance committee will not meet on May. The next meeting will be Monday night, June sixteenth, at Town Hall, seven o'clock.
Okay, historical.
Our next meeting will be June twenty-sixth, at Town Hall, seven o'clock.
Public safety.
I also represent the public safety. Public safety is not scheduled to meet again until September.
September seventeen.
And September the seventeenth, unless something materializes that would bill these expenses.
Thank you. Trails and open space.
And I don't see Paul, who's the chairman of the chair, here this evening. As I said, that was the first meeting I had missed because of being ill. I see Jane and Sue back there. Do you have anything to add at all? You had the trails minutes, of course.
No, I think, I think the minutes were left in what we want.
And, and just an important, for those of you that are following trails and interested, the regular meeting date, instead of being the second Wednesday of each month, is now the fourth Wednesday of each month, the same time, at six p.m. at Town Hall. We didn't put it on the agenda because that's over now, but you did have the minutes from the last meeting, just for your information. But the show is. Trails, trails and open spaces, the High Founder's Day meeting.
No, it just said G twenty fifth is the trail and open space meeting, and they changed it. So is that the correct?
That's, that's, that's the new date. That's just to remind people that instead of the second Wednesday, it's the fourth Wednesday. And I think you have a question, Ms. Flowers.
The Founder's Day committee, the minutes, it says here, C notes in the after-action plan in two different places, but do we have an after-action plan? I don't have it.
It's not completed.
It's not completed? Okay, but we will get it.
Okay. Is everything on that? Jeff Burkhall. Sorry to call you out, but were you, did you want to have public comments? Or did you put your name down to speak to the budget?
Uh, neither.
Okay. You just signed up that you were present.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, next time.
I see, I see many names on here of people who spoke during public comments, and their names are marked out on here because this is to speak to the budget. So when I saw your name, I thought, well, maybe he had public comments and not budget. But hey, we're glad you're here, and thanks for signing in.
I'm glad you've signed in.
And Ms. O'Day, did you sign up to speak to the budget? Because I have heard your name just now.
Ah, okay, yeah, no.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's very confusing. So now we'll enter into a time of a public hearing and actions regarding the fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget. And if you have folks who'd like to speak for the budget, in favor of the budget, if you're going to just come up, identify yourself, please give us your address, and you have three minutes to share. We'll do the people who are for the budget first, then we'll take the folks who are con or against the budget as it's in its current state. And you folks will have three minutes as well. And if there's any rebuttal, we'll have the pro rebuttal, pro rebuttal, then against rebuttal. So since it's not written out for me here, is there anyone that has signed up that wants to speak for the budget? Anyone who would like to take three minutes to speak for the budget? Okay? So hearing none, we'll move on to the con. And so if you want to speak against the budget, I'll just call out the list here, because you must be, if you're on this little list on the list here, Cherry Pike.
I wasn't necessarily here to speak against or for. I just had some questions about the budget and some of its comments. Cherry Pike, that they, oh, for Robinson Road. As I'm reading through the budget, for me, sometimes it's really hard for me to understand. I have to ask somebody a lot of questions. But I did have one comment on page seven, because I was just curious. Under the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, it says new growth-related issues continue to present themselves, such as pressure for more commercial development. I was wondering, is there a lot of pressure? I mean, I'm not expecting you to answer, but is there a lot of pressure from the community to have more commercial development? Because I personally would not lead for that. And then the, the concerns about clean water supplies, I don't understand that either. If that, or unless that means for the commercial development, if we're going to have enough water. I know that that was discussed in regards to development. And then also, I wanted to make a comment, need for more parkland and open spaces. Is that something that we're going to be looking at, is to have more parks? Okay. And open spaces, because then, you know, all of these are just more and more money. So I, I don't understand what those are. And I did want to say, perfect, I thought I had five minutes. But I just, I've been going to the greenway and the open space meetings. And I just wanted to say that I know that there's a lot of talk and that they did talk about hiring someone to go talk to the owners. But in no way should, and I'm glad that you said what you said, because in no way should we ever take anybody's private property just to make a place where people can walk. I think that that's just, isn't being an exception to me. So I would, I'm glad that you are not going to do that. So actually, that's just what I made, had comments, and then I wanted to ask it sometime when, I, I just, I'll, I'll ask questions more later, I'll talk to somebody about the question about the budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pike.
Right there.
Yes, ma'am.
A manager to reply, are we being pressured for more commercial development?
Well, that was a generic statement of, for instance, I'll take you back to the large rezoning we had, where I said, well, well, I forgot it was in fact. That's, that was certainly a highly debatable and, and I would say contentious rezoning. And you have different interests within Summerfield, and some of that is for commercial development. And that's what that statement was to do. That's just one example. And, but it was a generic statement, not directed for any project in particular. But there's always that being balanced with the other components of the comprehensive plan that very much say limited commercial development.
Okay. Good question, Ms. Flowers, thank you. That was a pretty many. Ms. Burkhall, if there's any additional that you would like to respond to, Ms. Pike, or they're pretty much covered.
If you have individual questions, I'll, we'll try to get to them, or I'd be glad to talk to you privately about that, too.
Okay, thank you. Wayne Crawford.
Wayne Crawford, eleven oh six, FCI, William fifty west. I read this snapshot I read for us, for Summerfield. Talks about how some council members here practice as a teenager, doing cherry picking in the way. I won't come back to that just yet. Further down, it talks about how fast it grew in the year 2000 to the year 2014. Oh, sorry, fifty percent growth, this is related to growth since 2000, 2014. But if you go back and look at the numbers from nineteen ninety-six to the year 2000, I'm being a little generous here. Two thousand population in nineteen ninety-six is actually less. Seven thousand in the year 2000, over a period of, what is that? Four years or so? Two hundred and fifty percent population growth in a very short time. Volunteer population growth in a very short period of time, with an average of one thousand two hundred and fifty per year for that short period of time. If you go back to fourteen years since the year 2000, you'll see that we probably have one fifteen, fifty percent of population growth of two hundred and fifty-seven per year. So you've got twelve hundred and fifty over four years versus two hundred and fifty-seven per year over fourteen years. Yes, it's a fifty percent number, but it doesn't say, also, what did that say? Two thousand, twenty-six, two thousand, volunteer. Did all that grow since nineteen, since the year 2000 to the day? That's volunteer, too. People moved here intentionally. They didn't move away and go to the range, but they came here. Came here knowing what we were, what we are, where they were moving to, and what they had when they got here, and what they had to do to get their cheeseburgers, their gas, their gro- what they had to do to get their cheeseburgers, their gas, their groceries. Getting in trouble, but they moved here and they went trails here. Actually, there are trails in Opinions, like Tamsin, um, other parks, I can't think of right now. So people move here voluntarily for what we are, not what they wanted to turn us into. That's what makes Summerfield really different. And it's something priceless that we can lose if we continue to try to grow municipal presence while we take, uh, under our belt and have to maintain it. All this stuff has to be maintained year after year, a hundred thousand dollars now, a hundred thousand dollars a year now for Ballfields, which the S R A was, uh, really, they said they wanted, but now that's already over here at the Summerfield street, that's what they want to go. We can't keep doing this and continue to beat Summerfield. We are on a path to being like a teenager and regressing to something that's even worse. I think back in the year nineteen ninety six, we were adults. Between there and nineteen, the year two thousand, we were adults and we didn't fight ever since. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Thank you, Sharon. And Gil Dunn.
Gil Dunn, congratulations. You're completing another year with an inflated budget. You currently spend about fifty-five percent of what you budgeted and what the taxes for. Look at the, the, uh, financial report and, um, so far we've only spent forty-seven percent of the budget. Even when the four hundred thousand dollar purchase is in there, it's only a few new fifty-five percent of the budget. So congratulations, but you know, that doesn't mean it's a good budget. What that means is that you have your year with passing inflated budgets. And I think you're doing the same thing again this year. I remember when the draft started in March and Scott had at least five or six, I had a commercial shot, big capital, and council realized, you can't do them all, how can we deal with this? And I remember that the, uh, the, the second mention of Ballfields was delayed. At some point, someone said, you, that could be delayed. Somehow it got back into the budget. It was maybe thousand, a hundred thirty-five thousand. I think, I think Tom Summerfield should let N C D O T lead as far as the widening of two twenty and where that increase is going to go. Not going to happen, this, it's not going to happen this fiscal year. If it does, you can easily amend the budget, but it would be better to wait until you're absolutely precise. It's rather than, uh, go ahead with engineering and then find out if, you know, T O T need to, to maybe move things if you want, should or whatever might be. The, you, but we, uh, but the end of Ballfields, there's, uh, but now you've got, uh, another two hundred thousand improvements for, to add parking and things like that. I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything. All it sees is pine, stye numbers and ideas. I haven't seen anything on paper, um, anything accurate as far as what that plan actually is. The, um, the, the budget, according to the North Carolina statute, the budget is to be presented and to finish a copy by June first and posted by June first and available by June first. Last year it was June third, this year it's June sixth. Your document statute is June first, Scott doesn't estimate. But you know what? I think this document should be done and, and should be presented fully before June first. I, somehow otherwise you just say, well, it's okay if everything's late, you know, it's just okay if it's all late. Not, I disagree with that. A lot of this, um, geez, there, there is something in here that's priceless and there's something on page six and says, and we don't want trails, however, not at the expense of McNeil's property. And you have language in this star on page six, and those are significant priorities, priorities of state of trails project, promised progress. Well, we planned a nice, nice road, that could be progress. I don't think it's progress that then includes taking McNeil's property, but the language, the language is your step.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Your time's up.
This says the next major step is identifying and designing.
Ms. Dunn, your, your time, your time is up.
Design on a trail that you don't have easements for.
Did you get your answers, please? You can put it on the web, I wish you'd.
No problem. Sure. I'll just write down. And I think we should be able to talk about that.
Okay, uh, any others for folks who would like to speak against the budget? Any others against? Then we'll have a fifteen minute period if needed for, uh, folks that want to have rebuttal with folks that were against it. Ms. Flank, is it?
Yeah, I would like to say something positive about it and would that be all right?
Well, this, during this rebuttal period, you have that opportunity, yes, ma'am.
Is that now?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm Kathy Flank and, um, so we buy thirty-two strawberry road of Summerfield. I would say no, I voted for you all and because I trusted you to take care of money as a citizen. It is my money too. And as a citizen, I think that you're doing a wonderful job. We're growing, it's over ten thousand people and I think that over ten thousand people in Summerfield, that if there were a lot of people, then there'd be a lot more people in here. I'm sorry that positive and not that way, but I thank you for your time and endless effort in trying to make it better. I'm sorry, I don't have the time to go over each of your items, but I thank you for doing it for me. And you're doing a great job. I'm sorry that, uh, that, no, not everyone agrees with me, but, uh, thank you for, for handling the money and I think you're doing a terrific job. And I certainly don't blame you for taking land either. I understand what you're saying and, um, but I sure, I know you keep saying that there's a bottom. Who is that person? Doesn't need to be sitting on any board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flank.
I'm ready, so I think I've seen most important. Um, I would like to speak in the balance of the budget as some of the comments have been made. We do have enough of a committee and, um, I thank you guys for showing, because, um, I think you have done a really good job and deserve respect. And, um, it's fine to have constructive criticism, but I think it should be cordial. And one of the reasons we have Summerfield so wonderful is because people have to be cordial. Um, the other thing is, is as far as moving forward, the northwest area is wonderful because of the families and children and growth. And we, one of the reasons we were drawn to not only Greensboro area, Summerfield and the northwest side is because of the infrastructure. Without infrastructure, you will have problems. And I appreciate the foresight of the community to see the need and to address those needs before they come. And that's what makes this great. When people talk about traffic, you know, there's a lot of people coming out of town and that's traffic, like in the D C area, Atlanta and so forth. But, um, I appreciate the opportunities that we have in this area for, for, from children in schools to so many different opportunities. And I think you all, I appreciate what you do and the town manager for taking your time to put yourself against the positive and the negative. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak, uh, in rebuttal of the against the budget?
Uh, yes.
I don't see anyone.
Can I speak? I didn't sign up.
Sure, absolutely.
Hi, my name is Patty Stokes. I live at sixty-nine eleven, Canadian Road here in Summerfield. I'm not going to speak specifically to my notice in the budget, but I am going to speak to the budget process, which has gone under great criticism. I have spent, oh, countless hours going through budgets over the last couple of months between three towns. And I am amazed at the detail in the budget that is presented in the town that I live in, and I personally present that. And the calendar of budget needs. For anybody to say that they were unaware of what was in the budget, I just can't imagine that. Um, this town is the only town that provides, I don't know, let me call, like a detailed list of when various, how many community meetings are going to be and when specific budget meetings, over and over, to the point that my only complaint would be, wow, it took me so long to go through this town's budget. The packet that I got for the budget that is here available to everyone tonight, it's like twenty-five or thirty pages. No offense to Stokesville, but it's a front and back page in Stokesville. In Oak Ridge, it's five single pages. It's unfair criticism to say that this town doesn't provide the information. That needs to be separate from whether you like what you receive. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Anyone else to speak, uh, for the budget in rebuttal? Anyone else? Okay, uh, then we'll have a fifteen minute, uh, timeframe for con rebuttal. So, um, if you would like to rebut something that's been said, it would take a time now, you have three minutes, just like you did before, please come up and identify yourself, give your address. Wayne Crawford, eleven oh six, S C I one fifty west.
I, I heard it since here, here's a couple of towns, not, uh, there were people who couldn't make it here, people interested in this thing or that thing. And I accept that. I know they do. Everybody's busy. I know people that wanted to come here tonight, had every intent to be here tonight up until last night, and they got called away. So everybody's busy. But you've got to give that there's lots of people that are not necessarily for whatever's been said here that people couldn't make it. There's ten thousand people out there. How many have you heard from? Hardly any of them. And you can't really indicate any one way or another what they think because you haven't heard from them. And presume one way or another, I think is foolish.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Anyone else? Is it?
Is it okay?
It would, it would have to be, it would have to be speaking now against the budget in rebuttal, uh, to the pros for the, sorry. Very sorry. I'm sorry, but it's really confusing to me too, but I got my instructions right here. Sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Flank. Anyone else who would like to speak, uh, against and against rebuttal? Ms. Dunn?
This is thirty pages, I think. Um, just would have been nice to have it at the meeting and we could, oh, Tuesday, we're scheduled to be there. And I guess that having things done, done timely should be a high priority, whether it's the board packets or the budget. It was great you started in March because you did have a meeting you could talk to, Scott started up on a five to capital projects. But I am the president of the language in here says, and that's major stuff, is identifying the design vendor and the design price. So I would ask you to, uh, I think the, the trails committee, uh, clearly is familiar with the area, we call it one trail, but I think they have to look at, you know, this. Going to be spending money, um, with buy easements, so why not look at two or three different ways to do it to see what is going to be the most agreeable with the people who live there and the cost. We have, we're, we're just looking at all we want and maybe have to sit and sit down and approach differently because of what two or three different options are, I would suggest that. The other thing is, we don't have big, big population growth. In the, the census in, in two thousand and ten, they, and I had provided some documentation on this, they actually, um, with census, they changed Summerfield, it wasn't Summerfield Incorporated, it was like Summerfield Addresses. So there's people that are unincorporated in Summerfield, there's still, that went into the numbers. But yeah, within your twelve years, we have, we have a steady, small growth. We don't, we're not, this is not a high growth area that if you lived, uh, in high growth areas. And yes, it should be, um, limited commercial development, um, the, and, uh, maintenance, um, repairs, as long as you're going to move, uh, founder's day to the Ballfields, why not, um, go ahead to, um, to sell, um, or give that, the property of Summerfield Road to the fire station to, um, to keep up. Last season at home, everybody must have been really busy with, uh, founder's day. It's some options in there too.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Okay, any other comments, uh, any other against rebuttal comments from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll, uh, move on now to, I guess we should have a time of, council have opportunity to discuss the budget, ask questions.
And I would actually like to present some highlights of what this, uh, the work of the couple has been up there and kind of leaned in during discussion, if that's okay?
Fine, that means that sounds good.
Okay, um, everyone, uh, I hope has a copy, there's copies up there on the back table, all council has a copy. Uh, I'm just going to take you through, uh, quickly. Um, if you will first turn, jump right into, um, uh, page six. I just want to point out at the bottom of page six, budget process priorities, uh, just to clearly state that these are the priorities that came out of the process. And I do want to say one thing about the process. It, it's been said that the statutes very much dictate that and they do. And our budget calendar, uh, is very much along with those statutes, is actually exceeds the dates required by quite a bit. We had a draft budget that was due as early as, uh, March the thirty-first. Then with presentation, we presented the budget that was, uh, on, uh, May the twenty-eighth. And, uh, the reason there is a January fifth date on the document you have in your hands is because there are a lot of requested changes that came out of that presentation meeting. We went back to the drawing board, made those changes and wanted to give you the most up-to-date, um, up-to-date document. So looking at the bottom of page six quickly, um, priorities, continued Gordon property improvements, uh, two, A W I, uh, Greenway South, uh, design that we've talked about quite a bit, uh, number three, uh, Summerfield Athletic Park, entrance road, and number four, uh, town signage, key transportation goals. Those are priorities, uh, that again came out of, uh, this whole process. And if you'll, uh, continue through, um, to the executive summary, uh, this, this is a, a real good highlight of, of where we're at with the budget. The dollar amount specifically is one million four hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. Uh, that's almost seven hundred thousand less than this past year's budget, six hundred ninety-two thousand. And, um, specifically, um, the tax rate, uh, where it has been at three and a half cents for the last several years. This proposed budget, uh, is proposing to cut that rate by three quarters of a cent to two point seven, uh, five cents for one hundred dollars of evaluation. And, um, as far as fund balance, uh, we do expect the fund balance to be, uh, close to eight million at the, at the end of this budget year. And if you'll flip through the document with me, um, back to some of the questions that have been asked, uh, that at the top of page eight, the, um, those twelve items, uh, if, if you're curious about any of those items, uh, please, uh, look on our town website for the comprehensive plan or come by and talk, talk to me about it. Those are straight from comprehensive plan that was very, uh, citizen driven and adopted, uh, in two thousand and ten. Uh, if you want a quick look at, uh, the makeup departmental wise with the budget, uh, right there in the middle of page, uh, that same page eight, uh, you'll see each department and totals and how that adds up to one point four seven six million. Uh, you will clearly see the capital projects at the bottom. Uh, just briefly, uh, the Gordon property improvements, uh, the fifty thousand, as it has not grown, uh, when we talked about that last year, we were talking about, uh, a certain dollar amount for, uh, salvage and mobile homes. We also knew that we have two houses on that property in addition to the home place house that will stay, uh, that will need to be taken down. Uh, so that fifty thousand is for, for everything there. And, um, also, uh, there's a barn on the property that's for some barn repair. Uh, with the trail development, we still have the same two hundred and fifty thousand budgeted, uh, and, and that is for our ongoing efforts with that. And, uh, with the Summerfield Athletic Park improvements, uh, just to be clear what that includes, that, that's the entrance roadway, uh, which is something that we need to be working on now. It's been suggested that we, we wait and let D O T take the lead, but the problem The problem is, the project's going to be done in two thousand and sixteen, and we're going to be without a very usable entrance into the park when that's done. So we need to stay ahead of that. One minor mistake on there, you'll see bad in pages. That should be one bad in page, that's what we're talking about there, for that Athletic Park. The paving, gravel, parking, access areas, there's actually a picture of that, just to give you a very quick visual, and I think that is on page... You'll find that on page twenty at the top. It's a small paper that, that's just an idea of the area, that blue area that we would be paving. And that is an existing need. That's not a, just a on wishlist. And if we jump back to where we were on page eight, we're also talking about some denting gates related to the improvements there. That total's two hundred and fifty-three thousand. Total capital projects, a little over half a million, about five hundred and fifty-three thousand. You'll remember, last year's budget was very project-headed. We had about one point two million in budget for capital projects last year. And so that's a significant part of why the budget is almost seven hundred thousand less this year. If you'll quickly move to page nine with me, you'll see again just a recap of that two point seven five cents, that reduction. And there's a lot of reading there. It's actually forty pages, but I think that provides a lot of detail for you to really peruse this budget. Of course, the calendar is listed, no need to go through that. We have stayed on track with the calendar all along the way. If you quickly thumb through to get you to the key parts, we'll skip over the demographics. You can use that for yourself. Also, we won't go into the detail about the organizational structure, but there's a lot there, just to give you the information about how the town operates under a council manager format. Also, on page fifteen, if you've ever had any questions there about specific contracting that we do, that gives you a quick recap at the bottom of who our vendors and suppliers Also, budget policies and procedures, again, very much taken seriously, there's a lot of statutes that dictate how we operate, but also our internal policies that sometimes we go beyond what the state statutes require. And we have a lot of oversight, we have a lot of, on the back end, oversight with the local government commission. And to get to information that will probably be of more interest to you, we'll just fast through directly. A really interesting page, if you want to look at page nineteen, this is a breakdown of your revenues specifically. That gives you a lot of clarity where how much comes from our property tax and two point seven five cents. Also, the sales tax. You'll see the other revenue amounts there, intergovernmental transfers, investment earnings, fees, miscellaneous fund balance appropriation. That fund balance appropriation is basically what we take from our existing budget balance, this year's budget. And a graph of that. If you'll look over at page twenty, again, that's a recap and graphical format of exactly what we're talking about with capital projects. That's not to be confused with capital expenses necessarily, because these are through projects within that area. One of the probably medias pages in the whole document, if you look at page twenty-one, this is the general fund expenditures. And if you'll look by department, it's a good comparison between this current year's budget and what's proposed for the upcoming year. The numbers that you see on the right-hand column in red in parentheses, those are items that are less than this year's budget, and the areas in black are more than this year's budget. And again, you can see a breakdown in the first column there of the percentages that each department comprises. If you'll flip over to page twenty-two, that gives some of the backdrop of what guides this process to, and talks about fringe benefits, talks about salaries, local revenue, state revenue evaluations that remain steady at over one point three billion in property valuation. Also, shows our ninety-eight percent collection rate. Just a map, this is a good document, if you want, a map of Summerfield on twenty-three. And then here's, here is the, on pages twenty-four, starting there, that's the beginning of the detailed line item budget. And again, much of this has been before you since March thirty-first. And if you're interested, I can tell you, I have a list, and you have it in your, the council had it in your agenda packets, of exactly the changes that have been made since our meeting, our last meeting on May the twenty...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And those are the changes since that date, so you don't have to go through and compare every line item, because that would be tedious. And then what you have beyond that, and I will go back to that and answer any questions as you have. If you look at page thirty-one, that is our fee schedule. Our fee schedule was a bit all over the place. We had multiple documents. We had multiple documents that were somewhat confusing. This is a new fee schedule that takes all of those, consolidates them into one place, and clearly shows what's administrative fees, what are planning fees, and what are athletic park and community park fees. And so that should be really clear, and be glad to answer any questions about that. And then what has to be adopted specifically from the LGC standpoint and the state standpoint is the ordinance itself. And that's what you'll find on pages thirty-six through thirty-eight. And again, that's really just a recap of all the detailed budget that you see receding. And I think that's probably enough of a recap, and I'm glad to answer any questions for you.
Thank you for the recap, Ms. Flank. I actually have a question. On page nineteen, quote, "Remembrance," I had a note to ask about this. Our investment earnings, twenty-five thousand, I think we've had some conversation, first with different individuals, as well as sitting on the finance committee. I think there's a real interest in us moving forward with making investments, proper investments with some portion of the money that we have. You know, it'll allow us to give us another income, a larger income stream, perhaps allow us to be able to reduce property taxes even more so than this year. So from your perspective, how should we go about initiating that process? Does it need to come from the finance committee? Can we, as I said, we put on our agenda for the next meeting?
Well, it's been a topic of constant discussion with the finance committee, and we have been looking at this as an option. We're looking at the options specifically related to this. We've been looking at how our cash management investment policy fits with the opportunities that we have, which are very limited. We've had individual dealer brokers in and spoken with them at length about what the options would be. We've looked at treasuries, we've looked at...
Okay, let me ask you a question, since you mentioned treasury. Is it treasuries or is it the length of time of the commitment? Or why is that not, why is that not a...
I actually had a little bit of a meeting with this, and I spoke to the LGC today actually about it. In our investment policy, of course, it's safety, liquidity are the top priorities. Safety, liquidity.
I'm sorry, safety.
Safety, liquidity, and yield are our top three priorities, things we're adopting in our investment policy. In statute one fifty-nine thirty, which God's law can invest, there is nothing that speaks to the term of how long it can invest or not. But I know it's been brought up on several occasions that treasuries, ten treasuries are paying like two and a half percent now. And I just was able to speak with them, and many investment policies such as the Mecklenburg County, Guilford County, Wake County, Cary, actually have taken in their investment policy to say that their town or city would not invest over five years, which I found very interesting. Town Summerfield does not have that in their investment policy. So that was a reason for my calls to LGC today to ask them why. And they disputed that that was not the direction that the town should go in unless it was just a very specific reason. They did say that we fill out a form at LGC two oh three twice a year, and it goes to Becky Dunleavy at the LGC. And she said, if I ever see something over five years, especially I look at the, you know, portal, then I call and just say, are you sure? And it is an option that the town council certainly vote on, the finance committee certainly...
And as you said, with special reason, I think we find ourselves in a very unique position.
That's true.
Which other than any other town in our state, folks are very unique.
We are.
I think we're better than everybody else. You could quote me on that.
Yeah, I think the question was asked last month, what would be the penalty if we decided to withdraw? And it is not like a CD penalty. It's like you buy into the market at a reduced rate property. But you know, if you saved your two and a half percent and you decide to keep it in for ten years, then you get full base value. If you decide that in four years down the road or six years down the road that you must have cashed in, it's not a specific penalty, it is whatever the market value is at that point. And if it were to increase like from two and a half percent to four and a half percent, then we would most likely, if we sold at four years, we would have an actual loss because the market value would drop so drastically that instead of having, we would actually lose principal. We wouldn't just lose the interest. Now, if you kept it for ten years, you would not lose principal. But you could actually, if you cashed in early, you could actually lose some principal. So yeah, that was just, they said it's just a very, you know, bottom target. The Congressional Budget Office is anticipating that the rates are going to go up. I actually found, of course, we know, no one knows that, I found an article that says they were just against treasury ten-year term. It was just, it was out of Fortune Magazine, which I know they're not necessarily advisors, but I just found it interesting. It says, "By today, cry tomorrow." It just gave that same example that, you know, people are really desperate, and we all personally and for towns are looking for something because it's like zero is almost what we're getting now. So it's very tempting to jump onto something, and that's exactly what it says. If I can read from it, it says, "The Congressional Budget Office isn't an advisory business, but its interest rate projections are a clear warning to any fuel-hungry investor tempted to buy the ten-year U.S. Treasury note." Now, we'll say this was written in two thousand and thirteen, however, nothing's really changed. Which currently yields about two percent, so now it's up to two and a half. The rationale for buying the security is that two percent isn't much, but it sure is better than zero, the approximate rate you get for money market funds and short-term bank accounts these days. But look out, if the CBO, the Congressional Budget Office is right, you'd be better off, this is a little extreme, hiding your money under your mattress for the next two or three years than using it to buy a ten-year Treasury note today. And then at the end it says, you know, you would say, well, what were we thinking at that point? We were desperate, basically, sort of it is. So when I spoke with the LGC, they certainly didn't understand. They just said, they're certainly not the investment advisory capacity either, but they do view all this, everyone that has investments, they have to. And you know, they look at the Raleigh, they look at small towns like us. And they just said, basically, everyone's in the same situation, that if they're going like smaller towns normally go, CD rates routes, or Seagulls or Finisterre, things like that. The larger towns do go into, you know, heavier investments with brokers and stuff, but you know, basically, we come upon with that. We discussed the fact that if you have at least ten billion dollars to invest, you could go with like commercial payers or something like that. But the problem with that is you check out a safekeeping account, which also has a fee involved, and I'm sorry.
Sorry, you're fine. I have to do what I'm told.
I'm sorry.
You got to stay on the budget as per what we presented. I tried not to, and I'm very, very sorry. We can close this chamber for now.
Bring it back with recognition, however you want to.
Bring it back as an agenda, but we're... All right. Production responsibility is here, there. First off, let me say, thank you for that amazing overview. That was very good, I thank you very much. I think our situation is an exception, and I think other towns and cities that may not be looking at making an investment, can't look at making an investment cause, they're using funds that may be required of them. And I think that the number that I've heard that we should have as a reserve is about thirty percent, and we're way...
That's actually required by policy in Summerfield, not other towns specifically.
Okay.
We've seen that.
And so since we're so far above that, I would just like to ask if we put that on the agenda to discuss.
And just to give a quick answer to your original question, the finance committee has requested more information that we're gathering to take back for next Monday night's meeting. So because we have June twenty-sixth, we have the majority of our two and a half million dollar seed offers. So we're working on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussions of the budget from the council?
Yes.
Ms. Flowers?
On page twenty-two, number five, salaries. It says another exception is that the new hire position only has one percent budget. What does that mean?
Right. What that means, that is in reference to the planner position. That's not saying that that's, there's only one percent available, but because of the timing and of that review, when that employee was hired in May, it's not going to, we don't need to budget a full four percent if we ultimately get a merit increase up to four percent because it's so late in the budget year. Is that clear?
No, it's not.
In other words, there's no need...
Are you saying that you hired somebody in May and you're planning on giving them a one percent raise in May when this budget is approved?
No, not at all. I'm saying that the review will be next May, and it's almost at the end of the budget year. So there's no need to budget a full four, well, maximum of, let's say, four percent merit increase that's included for some other positions because of the timing.
On page twenty-seven. It is, on the top line, the proposed salary and wages by the planner, says fifty-nine thousand dollars. Is that in misprint?
It is not. The current salary for that is fifty-five thousand dollars. That was the hiring rate at that position. That position is also non-exempt, and will have some overtime to look at. And so that factors in. Did we use two, seven hours? We're back. And so that factors in potential overtime, not meetings, there's only more meetings or meetings.
So has the salary and wages line item always included potential overtime?
It should have. If it didn't, it should have. We have, we have, all of our positions in town are non-exempt with the exception of mine. So I'm the one that gets to work seventy hours a day with no overtime.
Okay, so there's another line item on that same page, ten thousand dollars for landscaping. And I'm trying to figure out what you're landscaping. It's, let's see, fifty, ten, two, oh, three. What is it?
That would specifically be our town hall landscaping. And we also, with the acquisition of Gordon Property, we're going to have to at least mow around where the flag building is currently, around the hardware building and that lot. mow around where the flag building is currently, around the hardware building and that lot.
So that's really maintenance and not land? When I think of landscaping, I think of planting shrubs and trees.
Well, the landscaping is keeping up, keeping up. We've got a lot of mulch and bushes there at, at our town hall. So that includes that.
For that whole lot? For the whole year? That's a lot of money. You're going to have to.
You're talking, you're talking about adding, you're talking about adding, you're talking about adding the lot or the buildings, all right? You're talking about additional mowing that we have, even just keeping some basic areas mowed on the acreage. They are just keeping that mowed cost. Yes, absolutely.
We are seeing, but it is, are you talking about moving the whole fifteen acres or just like a minute?
No, just, just the, basically the areas that, that have been mowed now, basically.
Have you already gotten that contract?
Don't have the contract. We're working on the RFP, but we do have, we do have some pricing already for the mowing on that.
And that's what it came out of, that your meeting has a budget amount?
Yes. In addition to what we already have in place for town hall landscaping and mowing.
Okay. And the only, the only other thing I'd like to comment on, the fees. I just, question. So the fees, the planning, the planning fees, did you raise them or are they the same as they had previously?
Planning is a combination of some items remain the same, some are raised, some are new, fees that we didn't have, and some fees we took away altogether. And that's part of why I brought our planner here this evening in case you have a specific question about that.
What fees did you take away altogether?
Do you have that list, do we, of specific ones that, that we deleted?
Some ones that we deleted had to do with street closings and, I just want to mark that, street closing, which would be fifty-dollar a day.
I know one section that we deleted within planning just from memory was, we had a lot of specifics about custom mapping that our department really doesn't, with one person in the department, we don't really have a lot of time for that. We boiled that down to one item, custom mapping, as time allows. But we had a lot of detail in the previous one about that that was still in there.
I just think that some of these fees need to be raised, especially the ones for, not, not single family, not one person trying to go in for themselves, but major subdivisions, I think they probably afford to pay more money in fees. And we have to consider that our planning department has budgeted a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for planning with one person. I think that's a lot of money that I think we need to raise in these fees.
Actually, I'd like to point out that in our called meeting on, on May twenty-seventh, the number at that point was seventeen thousand and now it is nineteen. So perhaps some of those fees haven't been raised.
We, we did increase, and that was on your list of changes since that meeting, if you look down in revenue part, we added two thousand. After, after getting the fee schedule solidified specifically in planning, we went back and we added two thousand more in revenue specifically for planning based on the changes we made in the past.
Yeah, as I recall, that was one of the items that did come up as a discussion back on May twenty-seventh, and it is up two thousand dollars.
I don't think two thousand dollars is enough. My other question is the fees for parks and rec. Cleaning deposit is twenty-five dollars. If I was having a party and I had to make a deposit of twenty-five dollars so that I would clean up, I wouldn't have a problem walking away from twenty-five dollars and letting the town clean. So I think that, I know it's, it's refundable and I think if the fee is higher, people would be more likely to make sure that they cleaned up and got their hundred dollars instead of twenty-five dollars.
And we do those differently depending on what's being rented. So are you referring to picnic shelter here at this park, this one, and also the field house at the athletic park, which also, you know, twenty-five dollars?
How much would it cost us if somebody had a big party and left a mess behind them? How much would it cost us to have someone go and clean up an hour? Yeah, how much, how, how much do you think it would take, Jeff?
It all depends on the fee. We had some pass, it would be an hour if I had to, if it was a real big birthday party and stuff. And these fees with cleanup is pretty much compatible with other towns with picnic shelters and stuff like that. So that's what we kind of went around, which we have with everybody else with their population and their park and stuff that they have. You can see the rate for empty theater is larger because it's a larger area and there's longer time of people being there, three hours minimum would require people to do that. So that's why that's a little bit higher in cleanup deposit because we anticipate more people attending that.
Well, do you think if the, if the deposit was higher, people would be more inclined to clean up after themselves, to get their deposit back?
Oh, definitely. I mean, maybe maybe that would, yeah, absolutely. Has really never been a issue. No, it has not been a problem in the past. I mean, typically with picnic shelters, we know it's a birthday party or whatever and it's, it's never.
What a good idea. The mayor has an excellent idea. He said, make it a fence. So I just think the rates need to be higher. And that is pretty much it. I think the comment on the budget presentation, I think this is extremely detailed, very informative for the council as well as the public. I think the budget still has a lot of fat in it that could be cut out. And I also think that we need to work towards revenue neutral in some of the athletic parks, get more revenue out of that. It's close to us a hundred thousand dollars in here to maintain some bad athletic. Yeah, that's the amount. So that's it. Do you have any more questions?
I had a question about the, also in the same page, about the field rental. There's a rate, a resident rate fifteen dollars and then a non-resident rate twenty-five dollars per hour. And so my question is, when we have a, a group like SRA or the soccer, you know, United, how does that work? Is that a totally different fee schedule for a group?
Typically, right now, the only thing that's different is the SRA currently. They have, we have pretty much continued back from, I think, February two thousand twelve, SRA approached council and needed a reduced rate, which was for one season. We have continued that on, and now, Scott's got to, we are, and our rates, we're saying everybody's treated the same back, which obviously can be discussed or whatever, but that's what we were saying that we need to do. For non-resident and resident rates, we have a percentage of, if the group is sixty percent here around Summerfield area, they will pay a fifteen-dollar rate. If they're non, they have a twenty-five-dollar hour rate for, for their field rental.
So that's how you're doing it? Sixty percent or more of the groups from Summerfield, you're giving them the resident rate?
Yes. And I require rosters if there's any question. Great worry, money soccer is now branching out, having more people in this area. Typically, they've always been non-resident, twenty-five-dollar fee. So now we'll require rosters just to see if they do make the sixty percent or forty percent, and that's how they can get the rate from, from obviously the next.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then the lights, I assume that is also going to be now the standard rate for every group?
Yes. And, and that right there is exactly our cost. So we're not making any money for the lights. We're actually covering our costs, so whatever it is effective. And Valley has, required at their conference forum exactly what we have in Musketeer. So it is bound from due priority, so the ten-dollar rate covers the lights.
And that's fair.
So on a percentage basis, based on what SRA has paid this year versus what they will be paying, how much is the increase on a percentage basis?
I don't know percentage basis, I can give you an idea of exactly what they're paying. Now, they pay a ten-dollar per player who participates in our park. We have two hundred and sixty people participating in our park this, this current spring. So they pay two thousand six hundred dollars compared to our other groups that pay fifteen dollars per hour, ten dollars per hour for the lights, which would be a significant amount for the SRA increase in the sense that they don't pay that flat rate behind the players that got ten per. So it would be, it would be a, potentially a six to eight thousand dollar increase. And it's totally different then because they would choose how long they want to bill, how long they want the lights. So that's, that's more of their decision, how far, how much they want to use our park compared to now where they use it from five o'clock to ten o'clock every night of reserve, to, for his reserve.
So are you saying it could triple what they pay?
It possibly could. It just all depends on, if, if they continue the same route, the same times and days that they use now, it would definitely double, if not triple. But they never had a shrink of the, the hours per use. So they just had this time clock from five to ten and use it money for Sunday. So they never had to worry about keeping the lights on if there was ten per extra.
They never paid for the lights, did they?
No, it was ten dollars per player that participated in the Summerfield athletic park. They have elderly participate at these elementary schools that don't participate at our athletic park because ages and the field may have just, are better suited for them there.
Just to put some numbers to that, I, I remember back probably six, six or eight weeks ago, I supplied the council with a sheet that did some comparisons. And just for the spring season, for instance, this, this current spring, fall season, if, if they had been charged the rates, the same rates that other organizations had been, it amounted to about nine thousand six hundred and ninety more dollars. So roughly.
True.
Roughly ninety-seven hundred dollars more than, than what, and that's this season. That's not fall season too, that's just.
That's not annualized numbers.
Right. That's exactly, that's the matter, what we calculated.
I think, commenting on the budget, I very much appreciate the budget. It is highly detailed and Katrina went through the budget with us once at March. And then we, and then this was very helpful to have. I mean, I do wish we'd had it in May, but it is a very detailed budget and I do appreciate we reduced the rate because we have a huge unbalanced balance of eight billion dollars. And we do frequently, to quote Miss Stone, which I hate to do sometimes, but, you know, she is accurate. We are taxing people to put money in a savings account. And philosophically speaking, I hate that because I disagree with that. I, I don't think a government should tax people to save the money and put it into a, into an account. I think it's wrong. But I do appreciate the reduced rate this year because certainly our unbalanced can take a difference. It's not going to change anything that we provide to the citizens.
And it is a step in the right.
It is a step in the right direction. So I have to greatly appreciate that.
And I would like to add that I compliment the staff and, and for your efforts and just with, for your efforts in putting this together on a timely basis for us. And the amount of work that the staff has to put into all this, to have a budget that really is beyond the expectations that I was expecting to see. And I just compliment you for the effort and the truthfulness you give.
Are there, are there any other questions?
I may not have a question, I just have a comment.
Okay.
The, talking about the cleaning deposit, now I fully understand what Ms. Flowers is coming from there. However, I want people to use the park and I think, if, if we have not had a problem with people leaving the areas dirty or anything, I, I think that's fixing something that's not broken. It would be a deterrent to maybe other people being able to rent the park facilities. And I, I think really it seems to be fair and seems to be a good rate. So, but there again, that's just my opinion. And then again, I wanted to say about the park entrance and the comments that were made that we should just let DOT handle it. Well, when DOT started, this, widening to twenty, a hundred years ago, you know, they started having meetings then because they wanted people to put into it. So it is better to get ahead and tell them what you would like and, you know, what you can do with them. It is still our tax money, whether it's come through DOT or through Summerfield. So if we can get ahead of the game by telling them how we would like the park entrance to be, to help in that area, it's still helping with our taxes either way, I think, that we look at it. So I think it's good that we have situated that point. I think it's a good idea. And I do thank you all for, for the good budget. Tonya, I'm glad you wrote that park entrance stuff because I was up in town hall a week or two ago, looking at the map in the front row, it shows the park entrance. And I recall us discussing it. And the second entrance was supposed to be just like the first one, kind of a driveway into the park. And now it's expanded into a commercial-sized road. And it benefits people that want to develop their property and at the taxpayer, I think at the taxpayers' expense. So if you look at the map and you look at what's being proposed now, they're doing hard to replace. I want this, I want to refer to the map of that. I'm just saying, as far as getting ahead of DOT and not discussing anything with DOT, let them make the way. That's what I was referring to. And I wasn't referring to, you know, park the road.
Yeah. And I think it's important to point out that we're also donating.
We're donating the road.
The land. Where we're going to put that road is going to be put down.
They were donating it before, when it was a drive. I haven't seen it.
Ms. Crawford? Yeah, there was a discussion about planning and zoning application fees. Some added, some removed. There was talk about what was removed. I'm curious about what was added, and in particular, the comp plan amendment fee. I didn't even know we had a process for amending comp plan.
That was one that, you're right, that was added. That, that is a right for someone to request that. It's a, it can be a lengthy process, can be involved process depending on what is the request. And so there's a fee now associated with that. And Dewey, did you have anything to add to that specific?
There are some, some changes in structure of fees in party. That is because of, of the state legislation, neighborhood legislation. So for example, with your board adjustment, there are three things listed. That's because of the state statute, three things that the board adjustment can't do. That's it. So that's how the adjustment fee was done. It is, it is a person's right to request change in your comprehensive plan. We had set it rather high and we noted it would be a very, very expensive proposition and very time consuming. In addition, people can request change in your development ordinance. That too would be a very expensive process in terms of advertising and time spent for the number of public hearings. So we did have those, there are some various things. One thing, you have a master site plan which should take considerable time for developments for review, and we had no review before that. So the changes were made, one, to conform to legislation, and two, to make an attempt to, sort of recover our time that we're spending on various things for individuals that come to us.
And within that department does a good example of a change, a variance request with a board adjustment. Before our fee was a hundred dollars, which really didn't touch any of the internal work involved for a variance request. So that, that's been changed from one hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars. That's an example of an increase.
And are you planning to redevelop that change at all? Since we're assuming we're going to have development pressures?
Well, actually, we've had two submissions this week, so we are, and I've done a lot of work on it the last two weeks. a lot of work on it. The last two weeks is really um really needs to be increased.
Did the plant area development increase?
I don't believe so. I'm just trying to remember that. I remember seeing it on here all in the past.
Yeah, I don't imagine.
For the site plan review on page thirty-two.
Yeah, site plan review. We had one for everybody, whether it was a, say, a house, you know, or a small duplex or or a, you know, we have our baser buildings, your ready for this. Um and you'll see that in this ordinance, in this ordinance, I broke out the site plans slightly differently where the development review for the development permit fees, I included the site plan for a single family is included in that. So there's no separate site plan. And then developed uh ones for multi-family, non-residential, and then plant area development, which I am not finding increases. We anticipate that it's a change in your ordinance. So we are trying to kind of get everything set, get things into a logical pattern. And I think these are also uh some of these fees uh probably have been updated in a good while because um your current advertising, you know, just very average reselling case, um will run close to a hundred to seventy-five dollars. May-when today, we just uh got ready a hundred and three notices that have to go out and they'll have to go out in Canada, but that's a city case. You know, you add postage ads together. Basically, in situations with development where they're coming to you for approval and your approval needs dollars for them, it's basically what it is, that's something that they should pay for. They should pay for those services for the advertising and stamps and postage.
Is that within? Julie, when someone wants to do a comprehensive plan amendment, who would they, who who would give that approval?
You would.
The council?
It would go, it would come, it would file with us. It would go to the zoning board for a recommendation. It would come to you for action.
Okay.
Uh if it's if it's a significant change of, you know, from a large comprehensive change, that would require a lot more than just a simple hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Marie. One last comment, Mr. Crawford.
This comp plan, I was part of the comp plan. I've sat on it for two years. It's a subject I'm interested in. Uh it, this is for the attorney. If there is not an existing process, does that mean council needs to develop one or is there a statutory process already in place that we must abide by? If uh if there if council's required to create the process, it and authorize it, that needs to go before the fee is established, I would think.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow process for.
Okay, there's a process for requesting resignings.
Right.
We've never done a comp plan amendment. Do we have a process that already is given to us by the state or do we need to come up with one or?
There's one of our statutes, there's one of the the UPOs.
Okay, it already exists then.
Yes.
Thank you.
One comment, Ms. Donovan.
Just to remind you that this forty-page document and manager's presentation should have been done before the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan.
The presentation, no, you know, mostly done by June, July first or June first. It wasn't done last year, it's June third, this year's June sixth, and now the presentation is after the public hearing. These are, this is not rocket science. Would you please, would you please make sure, I'm just asking you, it was kind of awesome to say, you thought this is important to have it done by June first?
Thank you. Uh any other discussion by the council? Have a pleasure. I feel like I have my accolades to the document. This is a wonderful document. Fifty, I'll note it, technology and always participated, but I know you've had four hours and hours of your hard work and effort into this and we really do appreciate it. Thank you. Is it is it appropriate that someone would like to make a motion now?
Yes, sir.
I would make the motion to accept the budget presented.
Motion by Mr. Adams.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Barnes. All in favor of this fiscal year, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Go ahead. Please raise your hand. Those votes, votes four to one passes. So you have required a choice of the text. Okay.
Do I?
Sign it.
Do I, right. And that motion just required including the ordinance itself, which is well.
Oh, the budget ordinance, yes.
Yes.
Did Mr. Adams need to say that or?
I think I think it's.
Go ahead. Yeah, it's it's implied.
This motion would include the ordinances as to budget ordinances that's defined for the fourteen and fifteen.
Do they need to retake?
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Do you second first?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Barnes. Please raise your hand if you support the motion. It's four, four and against one. Now we'll have business from our town manager.
The first item under my Part Nine A Committee red一份for Finance, Historical and Public Safety Committee. You have that in your agenda packet and.
May I ask you that just real quick, Mr. Adams? Uh, Mr. Mayor Council, I'm going to request that two of these nominations or recommendations uh to be held in effect. And those would be Ronnie Stafford and Rick Hall. And that's based on your committee ordinance and the time the timeframe in there. I'm just saying we're having the applicants. I don't want to tie that to that. Well, we do that. We did that in time, but we can bring those two back in July.
Do we have a policy that, I was looking through the policy for the Finance Committee and it doesn't state how many terms uh someone can serve, like the regular committees, it's true to your terms. The Finance Committee didn't say it.
Uh what is the, if you look at the Finance Committee, it kicks that portion of it back to what we call our uh ordinance establishing the general rules of our signature. So it it takes it back to that.
It's three to the terms.
And and so we can, it is, um if you look at that, it's specifically for the Finance Committee.
Did the attorney want to say something?
It's actually standard as far as the number of terms. When it was adopted in twenty twelve, it's it's based on how long you're on it. It could be just one, two, if you were there more than four years of this two more terms, et cetera. I have copies of this in my.
So we do each one individually?
Yes.
Eventually it'll be three terms. That's not quite.
Three to your terms.
Yes.
And then to continue, they're allowed to continue if they're enough applicants.
For fiscal year, although maybe.
So my recommendation is that you would let's take these committee by committee. So with the Finance Committee excluding Ronnie Stafford.
Okay.
You have Mildred, Hopper, Bushy, and all of these um committee members, by the way, have expressed their intent to continue serving on these committees. And I think it would be appropriate if you just took them one by one per committee.
I just have one question. Um have have all of them, I had, I think, per the committee rules, you're supposed to meet at least sixty percent of the committee meetings. Um is that the case of all the candidates before us? Are we doing an attendance sound?
We we keep it in the minutes. Uh we we haven't had a problem uh in looking at the Finance Committee members. Um I don't think anybody has thought has fallen in that category of uh poor attendance.
Okay, that's what I was just curious.
I mean, we we have that within the minutes, but.
Okay, that.
Okay, so.
I think you said it's on this question.
About sixty, it could be seven.
Jane is.
I don't have a look at.
We want to keep.
Maybe very easy to go back to the last group minutes.
I was.
Who was there to talk there?
It certainly need, yeah, we we might have somebody occasionally missing one meeting.
I don't think Finance Committee has their problem. You might have that on the other page.
Okay.
I know sometimes that's just an issue without, you know, maybe making warrants in this kind of item. And so I was just curious. Do you think I have any questions?
So would anyone like to make a motion that Mildred, Hopper, Bushy be continued?
I'm in.
Second by Ms. Barnes, second by Mr. Adams. All in favor, please raise your hand. All against? Is four, four abstaining?
And then I want my voice.
Okay, it's unanimous. Oh, it's unanimous, four.
I have it.
Okay. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion that Dale Perry be continued on the Finance Committee?
I'd make the motion that Dale Perry continues on the Finance Committee.
Motion by Mr. Adams.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Lawland. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anybody unanimous? Jane Wilson, who's actually in attendance with us here tonight. Great to see you. Thanks for coming. Uh would someone like to make a motion that Jane Wilson be continued on the Finance Committee?
I'll make a motion that we really want Jane Wilson to.
Motion by Ms. Flowers, second by Ms. McQuillan. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
We still got you.
Don't thank me, yes.
Yes, and then under the Historical Committee, Linda is still here. Uh would anyone like to make a motion that Linda Southwood be continued on the Historical Committee?
I would make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Adams.
May I?
Have a second by Ms. Barnes. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed?
I vote for.
No, I'm voting.
Okay, it is unanimous.
I think so.
Mary Jane Gordon, would anyone like to make a motion that she be continued on the Historical Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Mary Jane Gordon to the Financial Historical Committee.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. McQuillan.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Barnes. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Patricia.
Use check.
Use Patricia, use check. Would anyone like to make a question?
I'll make that question.
Motion by Ms. McQuillan, second by Ms. Flowers. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that too is unanimous. Okay, under Public Safety Committee, Roxanne Gilgallen.
I'll make ten minutes.
Motion by Ms. Barnes.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Adams. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Okay, we're gonna skip Rick Hall and go to Robert Bob Johnson. Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that Robert Bob Johnson remains in the public safety.
Motion by Mr. Adams.
Second.
Taken by Ms. McQuillan. All in favor, please raise your hand. That too is unanimous.
Moving on to item nine B, the Historical Committee appointment. Uh this involves applicant John Piven and is a Summerfield resident. Has completed our committee application. Uh our council subcommittee that normally uh are all interviews, potential applicants. Uh I think you both uh know him personally and um uh with this particular position, uh he would have all voting privileges on the committee. Uh he has been attending at least some of the recent meetings that I've been with and um if we have everything on file that we need with application, if you have any questions, now we'll get a time and answer.
I have a question. Um on the Historical Committee, has Ms. Sutter familiar with this person and?
Yes, yes. He had lived here in Summerfield for years and years and had children here that went to school and everything. And he's very interested in the history here. I I recommend him.
Okay, so you can serve him as asset for your.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think that the founder's day, he was under District Ten and he was president in Summerfield. And I talked with him a little bit. He didn't really fill out a lot of things, but I did I did try to talk with him there and I think Alicia is is somebody that lives in her neighborhood. We both felt comfortable with not having to interview him specifically that he wouldn't understand. So I'd like to make the recommendation that we appoint John Piven to the Historical.
And I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Barnes, taken by Ms. Flowers. All in favor.
I just want to say that John is a really nice man. He's a history buff. He brings me by dad.
Yes.
I would say we have found a way to miss problems. All in. Did you say he is, he is a Summerfield resident?
He is.
He is. Okay.
He is.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Mr. Piven, nine C.
Item nine C, I'd like to talk with you just a little bit about the Wood Building, the proposed demolition of that. And specifically what we're talking about is is what everybody calls the flag building beside the old hardware building and also the blacksmith shop, which is the um unpainted building back in the northeast corner under the really large tree by the road, by Summerfield Road. And so the interest has been all along in once we acquired this property, uh because uh the flag building is very much considered a safety hazard. I think most would agree with that with its current state, that we would like to take those down. And what we have said, uh since we have been talking about this property is that uh we want to be good stewards of that, the materials. We've had interest uh from some locals who are interested in wood or interested in materials. And again, we've said that we want to be good stewards of that. And so the question is, well, let me back up. What we're trying to do specifically, since we just closed on the property today, uh we would like to get uh the demolition of these two buildings and just the seaming of that lot. We would like to get that in this budget year. And that means we have uh it's about three weeks, we have the rest of June to do that. And don't necessarily need a motion to come out of this conversation. I just want a little guidance about your thoughts on this building because specifically the flag building, but this really pertains to both of them. But the the question is, how much do we want to save and um and what's the process if we don't want to um keep a lot of that material for ourselves for possible ren- other renovations for the property? Uh what what would be your preferred method of making good use of that? So so we have this, let's think of this as a frame building. We have, uh I didn't measure, I guess they're uh probably one by fours.
Yeah.
On the side, the side planking, external planking that's that's red, orange. Uh inside that building, we have, uh it's basically finished beaded board. The walls, the ceiling is beaded board. Uh and then we have a large amount of tent on that roof.
Or even our own staff members getting there in a potentially unsafe environment, that I think is just too risky for us to have any citizen go in there for that matter. I think that's a highly skilled demolition group. And get it done with it.
Right, and that's, but that's not what I was suggesting. What I was suggesting, if we dismantle that, we would have a licensed contractor come in, dismantle that, and put anything that we would not feel like we wanted to keep, put that aside in light wood, light materials. And we can put some off.
That's awesome. Can you put what we can in the barn? And then if people want to take from there, they could go to the address.
We could, but to your point, we would have, we would have the safety issue taken care of. We would have it down, we would have that material stacked neatly over to the side where if we decided to dispose of that in some fashion, that citizens could get it safely there. They would not be in the building, they would not be a part of that demolition. That would be separate and what's not salvaged would be down, hauled off, and that area is...
And what would you anticipate the timeframe being to try to salvage some of this wood and put it up in an organized fashion where citizens or anybody else could come and get it?
Well, I've got a couple of quotes from a couple of contractors so far, trying to basically use the parameter of, we want to save this of this, and we want to dismantle this, and we know we're going to take chimney down in that area. And I have one proposal that involves roughly about a week and a half of, they would take several days to dismantle and then the rest selectively dismantle and save some wood. And the rest, they would come in and take the building down, haul it off. And so, I have one proposal initially for that, that's for thirteen thousand six hundred. I have another proposal, very similar by a local contractor, that proposed it the same way, other than they broke it down, they priced it out as thirty-two fifty to have, to have a group come in and dismantle that and set it aside. And then he would come in and do the dismantling, and that was another eighty-two fifty.
Are you saying three thousand and two hundred?
Yes, and so, I'm saying total on that, and I've got eleven thousand five hundred, so in the ballpark.
Are both, are both prices quotes from local companies?
One is local and one is Kenwall Construction that did the renovations on our building.
Now, regarding what they're going to do, the dismantling and the way that it needs to be done with the square nails?
Yeah, and what, specifically what we're talking about there is removing and salvaging the siding materials and whatever's possible to save and removing the nails from the boards. So, they were going to come in and, you can't just come in and rip the boards off the crowbar and leave it like that. You've got to basically pop them off, try to pull them over and square cut nails. And so, I've got two similar quotes to before we make the decision and before I get another quote on it. I think, I thought it would be worthwhile just to have this conversation and get a sense of what are your thinking on it.
And what's the total, what would be the cost of just total demolition?
When I made one inquiry for that, I don't have a recent one that I had acquired with D. X. Griffin on that, and he had told me nine thousand just to come in and take it down and be done with it. And honestly, I don't think that included any kind of seaming, which is a minor thing, but anyway.
I think it's worth it to do, to save some of it and reuse it. I think there's probably a lot of different things, as if we would do seal bids or what would be the way we would do with the board in hand.
I love old buildings that say seaming, old buildings that have to be torn down, but I definitely feel like there's a real consensus here that from a public safety perspective, that that taking those two buildings down really is our only option. So, you know, I wouldn't trust you, you know, I really like using local companies. So, and it just so happens that the local one is a smaller one of the two quotes that you have. And I don't know who it is. I have no idea who it is, so I'm so biased in my, in my response. But, you know, I would say that we wouldn't trust you with making a decision of how much of the buildings could be salvaged and placed into the barn where they would be safe. And then perhaps just taking whatever's left and neatly, safely putting it on that property and then advertising, and would we give that material away?
I'd like to know, are we selling it or giving it?
Well, that's something I would more input on too, because we have had some local interests. We have a gentleman here this evening that's expressed his interest before in some of the materials. I've had a few people call me over the last few months about it. And just to be clear on the process, I would quickly get one more quote for that, because the dollar amount being over ten thousand, that would, with our budget policies or purchasing policies, if we required a decision by your part, I think we could. Because of the timing is trying to get this done quickly, I think that's something I can present to you, you could make a decision on that quickly and grab that decision in the next minute.
What's everyone's feeling on selling or giving away the materials?
It belongs to the taxpayers. So, I think you need to find out first if it has downed. I personally would like to maintain those flags, where the flags are painted. I'd like to keep those for the town and put them somewhere to be sold.
I have already, I had had a request by the historical committee for those three boards and the flags, because they might raise those for part of their town's day displays.
That's a great idea.
So, I've already kind of promised those to the historical committee, the boards. So, where would they, where would they keep them?
I think you need to find out what value they, the brick, the tin, and the wood would have. And if we can sell it, fine. If we can't sell it, then we're done. And I was under the impression that those things coming down the day after we close them, it's tomorrow.
I would add just to Ms. Flowers' comment that if we're going to give it away, that's to a Summerfield citizen, not somebody outside that comes in and says, see that wood? I would like to have it from some other town.
I don't think you can enforce it.
You can't force it.
I agree with that.
Well, and that's, that's the question, is how many fairway gives something away?
That's why I suggested the sealed bid. I mean, you know, you should keep it, but that, unless you pass the name of the mail, it's hard to just write there or write down what they would give for it.
The only problem with the sealed bid process is just that process and as you, as you can hear, we're in quite a hurry to do this, and so...
Wait a minute. What does taking it down and piling it up for future use have to do with taking sealed bids if it's piled up there and somebody wants to bid on it?
Well, only because we were going to, only because we were going to seep that area, but that's, that is a minor, minor issue.
And the Blacksmith Building is not a safe condition, so if it doesn't come down immediately...
Well, actually, it is, and I'll only speak to that quickly. It's really sad that the Blacksmith Building needs to come down, but what happened was a little over a year ago, we had some real bad storms and a really large limb from a big tree fell on top of it. And it's unfortunately, it went, it crashed through and it's probably as much of a hazard as the flag board right now. So, it needs to be...
Well, I think as much, when I sit at that stock market inside that place, I'm always watching that building.
The tree's another issue that needs to be addressed. I wasn't going to try to address it immediately within this next three weeks or so, but...
Can we, Mr. Mayor, just ask Mr. Rick to take a point himself to look at this and kind of manage it in a way that makes sense?
Absolutely. You know, I think we can just make the markets that we're in agreement that the two buildings need to be come down. And I think that's great input to say the two windows that have the flags on for historical purposes. And then, you know, just to trust you, what we can salvage, what will fit in that barn, if we would like to salvage for possible future use. And in addition to that, it seems to be a consensus, and I mean, if I'm wrong, that we're interested in selling what's left. So, if you could figure a fair, a fair process for that, and just go ahead and execute that, we'd like to leave that in your hands.
And the only thing I would encourage you, because I know you have references on the first bid, not want to just get references on the other two bids. I would encourage that otherwise.
Plenty of liability insurance.
Well, that sounds, that sounds great.
One thing we need to do also is make sure these contractors have insurance.
Absolutely. Yeah, that they're bonded, have insurance. Okay, item nine D, before to update your comments from the council?
I guess. We've covered most of that this evening. Really no new updates on the Wyden project. Councilmember Flowers has asked for it, but we won't be updating on that, but nothing there. We've already got an update on the P. D. A. rewrite, we've talked about the greenway, and really I don't have anything to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports or updates or comments from anyone on the council?
I have a comment or a question, I guess, to Mr. Hill. Is we referenced earlier on the ordinances that were still under investigation and putting together, the ordinances that we've got from the focus. And can you give us kind of a target date to get an idea of where we might be seeing that and we can look at it as council?
I'll have to get back to you with Julie. From my perspective, I feel safe in saying thirty-eight.
From this point?
Yes, sir. Mainly because it's very damp. We're trying to simplify and streamline the process. There are a lot of artificial deadlines in there that would require more staff and turnaround times and stuff, it would have to do with that, so...
And you have a fixed amount that it would take to review that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not going to go over that?
No, sir.
Okay, great.
Any other questions, reports?
I have a question from Barnes. So, I saw that you went to an EPO meeting, and I just wondered if you could give a report next time?
Yes, I have a great, wonderful thing that I have. I was going to get with Scott and bring it. It's handwritten, but I will put together some things, the two particular things that I went in. I went on the tour, and that was fabulous. If anybody gives a chance to go to one and go on the tour of the tour, it is wonderful. The people down there work for the state, they want us to come, they want us to look. They have to, oh, I have an email on the gentleman's name, but that was very fascinating. I have a picture on my phone that I can show you if anybody wants to see it. But it was a wonderful tour where you just get on the truck and you run around, and they tell you, and they have these huge containers that this little thing goes, just like, you know, one of these little things from outer space that goes, and it moves it here, it moves it there. But there's a great amount of containers that come in and sit, and they had piles of trees that were sitting there, you know, lumber. They had a boat that they were, had a little scoop that was taking some fertilizer out and would put it in there. These dump trucks would just line up unwritten, and the thing got full, just dump it slow right in the truck, it would drive, and the next one would go through. But it had like twelve bays where these big, huge container trucks would go through, and they'd do their painting work. But anyway, this is a long meeting, but it was really fabulous. But I will, I will prepare written...
I love that you're a country girl, though, with big sentences and something. So, I think it's, yeah, I think we are all officially impressed. Any other, Mr. Mayor?
I've got one quick update that I'd forgotten about. He had asked me at the last budget presentation meeting, we talked about the substantial increase in the code enforcement contract. He asked me to look at options on that. And we have been looking at that. They are few and far between and set up like we currently have with basically two days a month. One of those options is benchmark that we did get a proposal from that's a little bit less. We had someone contact us just yesterday that Ms. Reed has been helping move this project and just handed that off to her today to explore it. So, we're not done on that work yet. We're trying to have that in place by July first, that there could be a change of that. I'll keep you posted, but right now, we're exploring the options on that.
And as a backup, we still have Mr. Wendell, who has offered to provide our code enforcement. Yes, Mr.?
Would you please update us on Gordon's property outside the flag building?
We did. We covered that earlier in the meeting. We said that it was closed on at two o'clock today and that we're going to proceed with taking those two buildings down. We're going to do some cleanup and landscape ongoing to keep the grass...
And then I'll add, I'll add just a little bit to that.
Okay, that's right.
The mobile homes have been moved in. There's been a lot of theft out there in the last few weeks prior to our closing. We require the seller to do a lot of cleanup and put things that were stolen everywhere with mobile homes where they basically ripped them apart, thieves required them to put that stuff inside. So, when it's time for us to salvage sometime after July one, that will be an easier job for us. We have secured the gates. We have put up gates and signs. And just to be clear, it is not a free-for-all out there to be trespassing on and stealing from, and so...
Did Gordon replace the heat in your conditioning unit?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We have that as part of the arrangement that was written in the contract. And Ms. Gordon bring the check today? We have that check in hand, and that involved two stolen HVAC...
These dump trucks would just line up unwritten, and the thing up full would just dump it slow right in the truck. It would drive, and the next one would go through. But it had like twelve bays where these big, huge container trucks would go through, and they'd do their painting work. Anyway, this is a long meeting, but it was really fabulous. But I will, I will prepare written...
I love that you're a country girl, though, that you'd exhibit something. So I think it's, yeah, I think we are all visually impressed. Any other, Mr. Mayor?
I've got one quick update that I'd forgotten about. You've been asking me at the last budget presentation meeting, we talked about the substantial increase in the code enforcement contract. You asked me to look at options on that, and we have been looking at that. They are, you and I are between a setup like we currently have with basically today's month. One of those options is benchmark that we did get a proposal from that's a little bit less. We had someone contact us just yesterday that Ms. Reed has been helping move this project, and just handed that off to her today to explore it. So we're not done on that work yet. We're trying to have that in place by July 1st, so there could be a change of that. I'll keep posted, but right now, we're exploring the options on that.
And as a backup, we still have Mr. Wendell, who has offered to provide our code enforcement. Yes, Ms. Dillon?
Would you please update us on the Gordon factory outside the flag building?
We did. We covered that earlier in the meeting. We said that it was closed on at two o'clock today, and that we're going to proceed with taking those two buildings down. We're going to do some cleanup and landscape ongoing to keep the grass...
And I'll add just a little bit to that.
Okay, that's great.
The mobile homes have been looted. There's been a lot of theft out there in the last few weeks prior to our closing. We required the seller to do a lot of cleanup and put things that were stolen everywhere with mobile homes where they basically ripped them apart, thieves required them to put that stuff inside. So when it's time for us to salvage sometime after July 1st, that will be an easier job for us. We have secured the gates, we have put up gates and signs. And just to be clear, it is not a free-for-all out there to be trespassing on and stealing from, and so...
Did Gordon replace the heat in your commission match?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We have that as part of the arrangement that was written in the contract. And Ms. Gordon bring the check today. We have that check in hand, and that involved two stolen HVAC units, and we will have two new HVAC units in the place of that.
And did you know railers are doing that down?
Not yet.
Don't have a date on that as yet. We'd like to thank all the citizens for coming and being here tonight, and for our citizens and for the council and for staff of Summerfield. I think this has been a very productive meeting, and thanks all of you for attending this evening. We entertain a motion now to go into closed session.
I'm making a motion to recess the closed session, particularly the five-page conference open character conditions or requirement or conditions of official comments of included with public officer or employee as provided under NCGS 143-3, eighteen point eleven A6.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Barnes, second. Seconded by Ms. McQuillan. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous.
I suppose you would manage this time or see what this...